I'd like to call to order this regular meeting. Is this good? We're trying to do better with our projecting and our volume and our people being able to hear me. So, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gethardt.
Here.
Meznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would welcome a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Nicole, seconded by Beth. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gethardt.
Yes.
Meznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll begin, as always, with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Board President Gethardt, members of the board. It's great to see you all again. I just have two brief updates for the board and the public. I want to start by thanking the board for the time that we spent yesterday in our, this semester's board prioritization meeting. And I think that, as we think about the success that we've had as a school district over the past several years, it starts with strong governance. And I think that those that want to see strong governance on display would be well-served to watch our meeting from yesterday, where we were able to come together, talk about our priorities, talk about the work, brainstorm ideas on how to continue to get better, continue to collaborate in new and different ways, and continue to engage both staff and community. Really proud of the work that we did. I know that throughout this semester, board members are going to be working on several of your policies, board policies BDF and board policy BEDB, that are going to talk about this meeting and how we operate. And that's, I think that that was a really successful conversation. And I know that we all have the collective goal of making sure that not only is the board properly engaged in our work, but that we're creating the right opportunities for you all to engage within our community. And so, looking forward to getting these policies and these processes really tightened up. And so, as we begin to head into the spring, our community can look forward to more opportunities to interact with our board out in our community and with our staff. And so, just very excited about that meeting. And just wanted to just thank the board for your participation and collaboration and partnership yesterday. Secondly, I'm very excited. This Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00, board members, is our Teacher of Color Hiring Event. And so, we've, I was reading in the paper, there was an article, and I believe it was the Colorado Gazette, that called us about this. And when they were talking about this initiative, they cited an article from the Daily Camera from 2009. Right? Same title. BVSD Looking to Hire More Teachers of Color. And it just goes to show that what we're trying to do, and I think that we're making incredible progress, as we've shared with you earlier this semester, is something that's been a longstanding goal of this community and previous boards. This Saturday, we're going to have over 140 teachers of color and 40 of our administrators working virtually to interview, to try to connect these teachers with opportunities within our school district. We've never had this type of participation, this type of effort, this type of just focus and passion around, I think, something that's been a longstanding just goal of this district. And so, I'm really proud of that. And I want to thank Mike Grotos and his team in HR, who've worked tirelessly to put this on. I want to thank our administrators, who are giving their Saturday up, because they know how important this is. And I can tell you, from our district leadership team meeting this morning, our team believes in this, and we're going to make some significant progress this year. I know it. And so, just very, very excited about that. And those were the two things I wanted to highlight for you all this evening. That's the end of my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Thank you for your comments. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Richard?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Anderson and Mike and his team, you know, for, this is amazing. This is wonderful. I really appreciate this effort, and I'm hoping we'll get some really good candidates out of there. So... Is there any possibility for a board member to observe this particular event? No? Okay.
Unless you're interviewing for a job, Richard, which I think I could set that up. No, no, but certainly, we, I think we could have an opportunity after the event for you to connect with folks to participate, to just kind of get a sense.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Anderson's report? I just have a quick question, Robyn. That is, what's the timing for knowing what teachers are retiring and kind of what the availability is? I mean, just generally, what does that look like over the next couple of months?
If Mike, if Mike can come up to the podium to get to some of the specifics, I do feel like we have a good sense. We've had some teachers who have let us know that they're retiring. We have a sense of some of our vacancies. I believe at the event, what we'll be able to do is, when we find highly qualified candidates, that principals who they know and anticipate are having vacancies, that we're going to be able to offer contracts on the spot. Mike, do you want to speak a little bit more about that?
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, President Gethardt. It's a great question. I think that where we stand is, we will be able to offer letters of intent to hire. And then, we will place those candidates in vacancies that we have with, meeting the principal first or their committees to do that. So, what we're actually doing is, as we meet these great candidates, we will then have letters of intent. If we feel they're really of value to Boulder Valley schools, they will get a letter of intent from us. That letter of intent will put them in a pool. And as we start to get staffing plans out to schools, the vacancies we'll see, they will then start to be placed in schools with interviews for those particular openings. So, we know that we have over 100 temporary jobs right now. We know we have some retirements through attrition. We should be able to hire quite a bit.
And remind me, isn't it like in the middle of March that we start to get our sense of, because we have to figure out budget and staffing numbers? And so, that still stays the same, because that's just driven by budget issues?
Yes, it is okay. But we do anticipate openings that will be coming through attrition, through retirements, that we can actually still do this. Again, as we came on board after the pandemic, well, we're still in the pandemic, but as we came through, we found that we've hired a lot of temporary people even this fall. So, we have a lot of, we have about 102 teachers right now that are on temporary contracts, that they get non-renewed. So, we'll have at least those openings, been able to fill with candidates that we really need to have. So...
And I'll look for it. I'm sure you don't know the numbers yet, Mike, to see if this kind of wave of retirements and people quitting and not wanting to be teachers anymore, it'll be interesting to see what that looks like in BVSD, because we keep reading about that. And we don't really have any hard numbers. It just, I think, I probably speak for the board that we're all a little nervous about what those numbers will look like. Because, and it's really encouraging to see the numbers of people who are applying to work in Boulder, because I think it's, as you guys have worked really hard, it's a great place for teachers and for staff to be working. But we'll just have to see what those numbers look like. And we won't know that till, what, like April, maybe?
Yeah, probably late, probably late March, early April, we'll know what numbers look like. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And thanks for all the good work on this.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? We'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is public participation. Public hearing and public participation has been changed for this hybrid meeting. Members of the public who wish to sign, to speak, sorry, at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the board secretary, Laura Schaefer. Public participants will join and present their comments via Zoom. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time, and that won't happen tonight, we don't have enough speakers to have to go to the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. We have a full lineup of speakers tonight, so we ask that you please self-monitor your time as well. I don't believe we have any student speakers, do we, Laura? Okay. We will now turn, and our agenda's so light that I think everybody's like non-agenda, basically. So, I'm just going to go from the top to the bottom of the speakers, the list I have. So, the first speaker I have is Shannon Weissblatt.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Hi, board. I just wanted to say, thank you for all that you do and all the time you have devoted to being on the board. I know it's a really tough job right now, and in the face of a pandemic and, you know, differing opinions, it's been extremely harsh. I've been fairly quiet about ideas so far, knowing that you've deferred mostly to public health based on what policies we instill in the school. But I'd like to ask you tonight to please take a cue from Jeffco. Their school board fought really hard for the kids, and they asked for a specific date for lifting the mask mandates. It seemed to be pretty key, when I listened into the meeting last week, that the school board had asked for a February 11th date to end the masking mandates. And Jeffco Public Health really deferred to that. So, I ask you all, as a school board, to please consider asking Public Health to give us a date when we can lift these mandates for our kids. It's been two long years, as you know. I know some of you have kids in BVSD, and I'm sure you're experiencing some of the same feelings that we parents are feeling. So, I just really urge you guys, I know you're there for the kids. I know you have the kids' interest at heart, to please think about asking them, as a board, coming forward as a force, united, to say, "Let's do something, guys. Come on, we've got to move on." All these other school districts and neighboring counties are doing it. Schools around the country are starting to do it. I think it's really time for you guys to say, "Let's stick up for these kids. Let's ask Public Health to lift these mandates, and let's return to some normalcy." I think, I think the kids really deserve it, and I would really appreciate you guys trying to speak up on their behalf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emery Butler.
Thank you. Remember the decision to return to in-person learning? It was a struggle, and it was not perfectly popular. There's no such thing in a democracy. Diversity of opinion is inevitable. The statistics could provide data, and people could give their opinions, and of course, we did. In the end, a decision had to be made. No unanimity, no guarantee, none of the didactic simplicity and authority of a mandate. It was a human decision and a hopeful one. And hope, as the poet Emily Dickinson reminds us, is always present if we have eyes to see and ears to hear. Hope is the thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words and never stops at all. And sweetest in the gale is heard, and sore must be the storm that could have bashed the little bird that kept so many warm. I've heard it in the chillest land and on the strangest sea, yet never, in extremity, it asked a crumb of me. The mask mandate cannot go on forever. We all know this. Even now, it's crumbling to its end. Science and statistics cannot make this decision for us. Can we know for sure what is the right path? No, we can't. But we know that learning, thinking, wondering, seeing, teaching, talking, and poetry are timeless. The time has come to relax our grip, to lift the burden that has been weighing down our kids, our teachers, our schools. Statistics has had its say and will shout at us again and again, but it's time to listen to the birds of the air, turn to hope, the thing with feathers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie James.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to bring to board attention the dire conditions of the auditorium at Burnsville High School. Of particular note are some safety concerns. These include the lack of a safety net for the orchestra pit. Such nets are recommended by OSHA and safety experts in case of falls. And in fact, OSHA rules for theater safety typically follow the general industry standard for fall protection, 1910.23, that requires fall protection measures to use for walking and working surfaces four feet or higher. Reportedly, our school brought this concern to the district, but was told it is not required and hence will not be paid for by the district. However, we believe that it should be due to paths, injuries, and other theaters caused by the lack of a net, and this potentially sets the district and our school up for a lawsuit. We do not ask football players to play without protective pads, baseball players to bat without a helmet. Why should we allow our theater students to perform without necessary precautions? Athletics receive a budget from the district, but theater does not. A part, another part of the auditorium is that the roof also leaks. This has led to the carpet and the walkways consistently being wet, and the concern for mold has been discussed. The auditorium floor is also a safety issue, and it is coming up in places, creating a tripping hazard. The lighting is too dim, making it difficult to see backstage during performances. We recognize that funding isn't an issue, but feel that the performing arts at Burnsville High School is largely ignored. For example, we requested to sell food at the snack shack during football games, but was told this is only for baseball parents. However, the stand was paid for with bond funds. To address such issues, parents have helped form a nonprofit to raise funds and support the arts, and we've raised thousands of dollars to help pay for programming to enhance the student experience. Improving such opportunities will increase the ability for students to gain more experience in the performing arts, all of which will make them more competitive to be accepted into local or theater programs in college. We hope the district will also support these students. Thank you.
Thank you. We next have Erin Meschke, who's been given two minutes by Karen Nance.
My name is Erin Meschke, and I'm a parent in Boulder with two graduated students and two still in high school. While I am completely opposed to the masking of staff and students in BVSD, the main thing I want to use my time today to do is to correct the misunderstanding that has been circulating concerning the federal COVID-funded schools around the country have received. The misunderstandings seem to be on both sides. When I first began my research into the CARES Act, ESAR, ARP, and GEAR funds, I was under the impression that in order to be eligible for these grants, a school would be required to follow all of the CDC guidelines, with masking being high on the list. The wording of the federal documents is misleading in this way, but COVID funding is not linked to compliance to the CDC. Universal masking, social distancing, vaccination, contact tracing, handwashing, cleaning of facilities, and testing are all seen as requirements when they are, in reality, and also in the actual wording, only strongly recommended. Question 30 of the CDE Frequently Asked Questions About Federal Funding page asks, "If a local education association, LEA, receives funds under ARP/ESR-3, is the LEA required to follow CDC's directives to control the spread of COVID-19?" The answer says, "No, the LEAs must develop a plan for describing the prevention and mitigation strategies it will use to ensure the safety and health of students and staff to the extent practicable align with the CDC's guidelines." Question 33 asks a similar question. "Will the LEA lose its ARP/ESR-3 funds if the LEA's safe-in-person plan does not comply with CDC guidelines?" The same, the answer is the same. No. The ARP/ESR-3 requirements are that the LEA consider and align with the CDC's guidance to the extent practicable. I have confirmed with superintendent's and school district websites around the country that have not instituted mask mandates for their students, but still have received federal COVID funds for their schools. The same is true around the state of Colorado. I did not survey every school district in Colorado, but did verify about one-third of the districts in the state, with about a third of those that don't require masks, but still have received funds from all federal programs. It is, therefore, a false statement for anyone on either side of the argument to say that federal funds are contingent upon submission to the CDC's school masking agenda. According to the adopted 2021-2022 budget, BVSD has already received $18,365,000 in funds and is submitting applications for ESAR-2 and ESAR-3 funds for an additional $20,200,000. With a three-year average decrease of enrollment of over 1,500 students at a value of around $8,000 per student, that means BVSD has sustained an over $12 million loss from students leaving the district. In my experience with other parents and my own opinion, continued masking does not encourage parents to keep their children in BVSD. Much the opposite. The longer the lockdown measures are applied, the more resolved parents become to find a better solution for their families. Consider the mass exodus of people from the totalitarian land of California and the great increase in population states without restrictions, like Texas and Florida. As I mentioned in my public comment last week, my two high school children are not in BVSD buildings because of the masking policy and vaccine pressure, while my two graduated children are delaying college for the same reasons. I will not send them back until a normal, open experience is available, and I am willing to make the necessary sacrifices to have them at home. The untold harms of masking our children in school cannot be blamed on the CDC or federal funding, because we have the power to tell them we will not take their recommendations. Boulder County Public Health may choose to continue to hold the line with their unending unsuccessful mask mandate, but that mandate is not a law. A law has to go through the full legislative process with our elected officials. This mandate was issued by a group of appointed individuals who have no official authority by any law I can find and no way for the people to hold them accountable for their actions. Stop hiding behind bureaucracy and start doing your job to protect the children of BVSD. Federal funding does not tie your hands, and Boulder County Public Health failed mandate should not be dictating your policy. Please make these changes now and unmask our children. On a final note, there's no reason these meetings are still happening online. The emergency is over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Courtney Blanco. I think you're muted, Courtney.
I'm muted. Sorry, thank you.
Yep, there you are.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. Hi, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for sharing public comments. Public comments are very important, as they are, should be taken into consideration for these strong recommendations from, as was mentioned, these unelected appointees who have decided that they know what is best. They've taken freedom and personal choice and personal responsibility out of the equation in the name of safety. And the only safety that compounded to that, of that, is safety to those tyrants who've decided to take these powers. By unmasking our children, you give the power back to the parents. It should be a choice. It should not be mandated to not be masked or to be masked. It should be a choice. And that gives the responsibility back to the people as it should be. The damage done to children, especially the young children, masking two-year-olds is asinine and insane. There's no reason for a two-year-old to be masked. It will damage them and their development beyond what we will know for possibly a generation. And it is unspeakably evil to want to muzzle and deny children the ability to develop social skills, to develop social acuity, to learn to read at the faces, so they can determine. They're missing out on 7% of communication, because it's all, it's done silently, nonverbally, with faces. As the previous speakers have said, you are, the longer this goes on, the longer you are solidifying parents' choices to do what is best for our children, to protect them from tyrants, to keep them home, to keep them out of a school district. I stand with her. I stand with them. I've given an oath to defend our liberties and our Constitution.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Rafini.
Hello, my name is Eric Rafini, and I'm a parent whose kid goes to Flat Irons Elementary. My comments tonight are related to enrollment and class sizes. When I showed up the first day of school last August with my kindergartner and third grader in tow, I was disappointed to learn that there would only be a single class for each of their grades, and that there would be 28 kids in kindergarten and 31 kids in the third grade. As you probably know, over the last eight years, Flat Irons has seen a 40% drop in enrollment, from 290 students in 2013 to just 179 students today. I understand that there is a formula for figuring out how many teachers a school gets, but I'm here tonight to tell you that we desperately need two classes per grade to maintain and grow this school. And it also might be time to reevaluate the open enrollment policy. Placing 31 students into a single class isn't fair or equitable for the teacher or for the students. Teachers need a buddy teacher, and students need individual attention. I was told by the district that it was okay to exceed the district test, because they would provide additional funds for para professionals. Hey, don't get me wrong, we love our paras, but they are not the answer. First, it is extremely difficult to find a qualified para who will work for $15 an hour. And second, a para is not the same as having a second teacher with a smaller class size. We love our neighborhood school, and we want to send our kids to Flat Irons, but it's very difficult to recruit open enrollment students when you have these class sizes. Furthermore, when I asked about class sizes for next year, I was told that I would just have to wait until August to find out. As a parent, the wait-and-see approach doesn't work for me, and as by the time August comes around, I have very few options left available. It's a bit of a catch-22, but I urge you to consider making Flat Irons a two-round school for next year. I know my family and many others would love to stay and would work hard to recruit open enrollment families to join us. Otherwise, I fear that it's going to become a race to the bottom in a slow, gradual step towards that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mel Pazol. Mel is not on. We'll go to our last speaker and then see if Mel comes on. So, our last speaker for tonight is Christina Eisenstein. Also not on. So, neither Mel nor Christina are on? So, we can, we should close public comment, then? Okay. Thank you. That concludes our speakers for tonight and concludes our public participation. We appreciate it, hearing from all of the speakers this evening. We'll now move to the next item on our agenda, which is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Okay, Beth, thanks.
I just want to thank all of our speakers for calling in tonight during public comment. I really appreciate hearing from the public. And I read all the emails you sent. Just want to tell you, we appreciate your input. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Nicole?
I, too, just wanted to say thank you to everyone who provided comments this evening. While I may not always agree or be able to act on your feedback, please know that I've heard you. heard you, whether you in public comment or in the emails. I also wanted to note it, mention that last week I had the pleasure of attending Monarch High School girls' basketball game with Kathy, Board President Kathy Gebhardt, in which we were presented with banners that were made from Jeffco students and staff that were in support of all of our student schools and families impacted by the Marshall fires. It was really great to see that level of community support from our neighboring school district and from Senator Tammy Story. So thank you to Jeff, Jeffco, students, staff, and Senator Story, and to BVSD for help coordinating that as well. Lastly, I wanted to say congrats to all of our BVSD middle and high school students who recently won Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. Thanks for all of your commitment to the arts and elevating that level of our curriculum.
Thanks, Kathy. This week, as many of you are undoubtedly aware, Superintendent Cory Wise was dismissed without cause from his position in the Douglas County School District. In response, more than 75 sitting and past school board members across the state of Colorado signed on to a letter. All seven members of this board here in Boulder Valley included their names on this letter, which I will read now. As duly-elected school board directors representing rural and urban communities throughout Colorado, we are both shocked and disappointed by the unprecedented action to terminate Superintendent Cory Wise without cause by the newly-elected members of the Douglas County School Board. As elected school board directors, our job is to prioritize the needs of students and staff across our district and to put our communities first. Effective leadership is rooted in transparency and accountability and requires us to work across ideological divides to create strong and resilient schools. Removing an effective superintendent like Cory Wise without cause, without opportunity for public engagement, and despite strong and vocal pushback from teachers, students, and staff is a failure of governance. While the minority voices on the Douglas County School Board were unable to prevail, their voices were heard. We appreciate their dedication to their roles, their demand for public conversation, and their adherence to all rules and regulations regarding open meetings and the Colorado Sunshine Law. Former Superintendent Wise served the Douglas County School District with dignity and honor for over 25 years. His endless service to educators, families, and students deserves to be celebrated. We can all empathize with the difficult challenges that former Superintendent Wise and the previous Board of Education faced as they had to govern through an unprecedented public health crisis. As former Superintendent Wise decides what will come next for himself and his family, we hope that they are afforded the necessary time to heal from this disappointing process. To the educators of DCSD, we acknowledge that this decision causes new uncertainty during an already difficult time. We value the work you do for students and families across Colorado. Finally, we echo the call by those in the minority on Douglas County School Board for a transparent process that is in full compliance with the law as they select the next leader for Douglas County schools. We also hope that the new majority recognizes the need for unity as they will be charged with bringing together a divided community. We stand ready to support all members of the Douglas County School Board to ensure all students across Colorado have access to a high-quality education that is focused on student achievement and not politics. That concludes the letter, but I also want to add on a personal note that what happened in Douglas County was the result of putting politics ahead of education and ideology ahead of students. It can happen anywhere, and I hope anyone who cares about public education is paying attention.
Richard, I can't tell you. Okay.
I'm next. I want to thank the speakers tonight, too, and I want to just acknowledge that we do hear you, and hopefully soon we'll start getting to some normalcy. But I also want to reiterate my thank you to you, Dr. Anderson, and to Mike for the work and efforts that you put together to create this Employee of Color Forum that's going to be happening. And you mentioned that past superintendents and past board members, et cetera, have always had this in their forefront. Well, I want you to know that I go back to 1970 in this district as a community member, as a parent with kids in school, and 1976 as an employee of Boulder Valley School District. And I do recall working with many superintendents across the spectrum that had hiring more employees of color in their radar. As much as their attempts were, they, the district had a hard time trying to accomplish whatever goals they had in mind. But I am super pleased with what you've accomplished, or which you'll accomplish, hopefully, and I'm looking forward to hearing the results. The other thing, too, is that the, the school district, because of some discontent in the community, this is many years ago, I'm thinking probably around 1973, 1974, around that time, the school district implemented or created a task force, and it was called the Multi-Ethnic Steering Committee. And, and their charge was to see what they could do and figure out to recruit and advise the district around recruiting, hiring, retaining, and promoting employees of color. Well, that effort continued, and the school district, through the Multi-Ethnic Steering Committee, developed a plan to get this done. That plan, I think, is sitting on a shelf someplace in the archives. I don't know where. But like many other plans that we were involved in putting together are sitting in archives, and a lot of it had to do with hiring teachers of color, providing opportunities for kids of color, and all of that wonderful stuff. But they're in, in shelves, collecting dust, or I don't know where they're at. But I am so happy with the work that we have done as a board and as you, Dr. Anderson, and the staff and the team here in developing the strategic plan and the direction that we're heading to create more opportunities for kids of color. And I was so pleased about the meeting that we had last night, too, by the way. I was super relieved with that meeting. And I can just see some bright future for all students, but in particular for our kids of color and our staff of color. Thank you very much.
Kitty, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I, I do have a few comments. First, I'd like to thank everybody who called in to speak to us. It is important that we hear from the public, even if we don't agree with everything that you're suggesting. I would like to thank Mr. Butler for the poetry. I've had a concern for a while, actually, since my kids were in school, that the arts receive short shrift and that sports tend to have a lot more support than the arts do. So I am concerned about the situation in the Broomfield High School Theater, and I hope we can do something to make it as safe as it needs to be. I'm looking forward to this weekend's job fair. You know, I'm not going to be there, of course, but I'm really looking forward to us being able to find some top candidates to offer jobs to. And then I would like to remind people that public health orders do, in fact, carry the force of law. There seems to be some misunderstanding about that because we've heard more than once from the public that they don't think it is a law. So I will read from the CDPHE website. "Under Colorado law, the Executive Director of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has the authority to close or limit access to theater schools and other public places. The executive order may also forbid gatherings of people or may seek isolation or quarantine of individuals when necessary to protect the public health and to investigate the control, excuse me, investigate and control the causes of epidemic and communicable diseases affecting public health." "As Colorado law requires compliance with executive and public health orders, not following these orders is breaking the law. We all must do our part to ensure success and call upon all Coloradans to comply. The Colorado Attorney General representing CDPHE can seek a judge's order in state court to force an individual or business to immediately comply with an order, or where a district attorney is willing and able, can work with them to do so. And this is not just about state health orders, but it applies to all health orders." So, you know, I hope people understand that. And the other thing I want to say about that is, I personally would not feel comfortable encouraging Boulder County Public Health to lift an order or change their, their recommendations based on what we want rather than what they believe is in the best interest for the public health of our entire community. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Kitty. Stacy?
I too want to thank the speakers tonight. I also wanted to thank Lisa for her leadership with that letter to support Douglas County schools and to second her comment about that you need to pay attention to this is happening. This is not an isolated incident in our state. It's happening other places, and elections do matter, and we will have another election November 2023 where there will definitely be seats open. So everyone needs to pay attention to what's happening in our state.
I too want to thank the speakers, and I have to admit, I enjoyed the poetry. I was finding myself thinking I might have to go look it up and read it myself. So thank you for taking the time out of your busy lives and schedules to come and share your concerns and your comments with us. I also want to thank my fellow board members and Dr. Anderson and everyone for a very successful meeting last night. I'm hoping the public will see the good work that we did last night in some of the ways we conduct ourselves going forward, including the way we'll start our meetings with a land acknowledgement and with appropriate use of identifying ourselves with pronouns. So I think we'll see some exciting work going forward as a result of the hard work that we did last night. So I echo what Dr. Anderson said. I thought it was, we had some challenging conversations to have. They were respectful. They moved us forward, and it's what good governance looks like. I don't blame anyone for not wanting to dial in last night to watch it, but I think you'll get to see the benefits of it as we move forward. I also want to thank Lisa for taking the lead on, on getting the letter drafted over the weekend. I think it was a really interesting contrast that Board Member Raj Paul and I were able to experience on Friday night. We got to see the best of education when we went to the Monarch School, and these teachers were so excited. And thank you to Randy Barber for putting that together. One of the teachers was so worried, I mean, we literally had hundreds of posters, and I'm looking forward to, I thought we'd get like one per school, and we ended up, I think, getting one per classroom. It took several of us to carry the posters off of the floor. And one of the teachers who was, had spearheaded the whole thing, even brought a glue stick just in case we needed to glue some of our posters back together, and he was so happy he remembered the glue stick. And so it was, it was really pretty moving to, to see that and to see the effort that they took to drive down from the Jeffco Mountain Schools. And a heartfelt thanks to Senator Story for helping spearhead that because it was really, I, I just hope that the students, when they see that, can feel a connection to other students and the heartwarming help and intention that they have in trying to support us as we go forward. But at the same time, down I-25, the Douglas County School Board was meeting, and if you want to see a contrast in what I believe is a failed governance structure and good governance, you can go watch the meeting. I think it's available for people to watch, and it's painful. And so, as, as my fellow board members have said, it's hard to, to work together and hard to have good governance, but the effort is worth it for our children, for our communities, and for our schools. And so I thank everyone, and I hope that we can continue along this path. I have no doubt that we will. But what happened in Douglas County was, was really depressing. And what I've learned today, this is not just Douglas County, I've learned of four other school districts where they're seeking to terminate their superintendents for no cause. So I hope that this, what's turning into be not an epidemic, but, but certainly a troubling trend, ends soon because the superintendents that I know of who are facing termination for no cause have done nothing but devote their lives to public education and to their districts, and for that they get fired with no cause. So it's, it is a problem that we're facing, and I'm really hopeful that we can all pull together to try to turn the ship around so that we're all supporting public education again. And so that's really all I have for tonight. I will see, so next we have information.
Kathy, can I say one more thing?
Of course.
Yeah. What I forgot to say is, again, to thank Lisa for her leadership with the communication around the Douglas County School District, and also to thank Beth and Nicole for testifying at the state legislature in favor of a law that would limit campaign contributions to board members. Because there are many school districts whose board races have a lot of outside money coming in, and I don't know this for a fact, but I have heard that that was the case in Douglas County. I mean, I know they had enough money to make a television commercial. And we need to keep our elected officials supported by our local people. We're the people, they're, they're the people we're accountable to. We are not accountable to any kind of outside groups, outside tax, or anything else. So if you agree with me, I would encourage you to contact your representatives and state senators and encourage them to support a bill because school boards are the only people who can raise an unlimited amount of money, and that's just not right.
Thanks, Kitty. In, in relation to the, the letter, too, I want to thank our past board members because we had prior board members from across the state step up as well. And I've all along believed that even when you are no longer serving in an official capacity, that those board members remain connected to the communities and to the people that they learn to connect with. And so I'm really thankful that not only did we have current board members, but we had many of our past board members and past board members and board presidents from across the state signing on. So I thought that was, that was really helpful. Anything else before we move on to information? Kitty, anything else? I don't have any visual cues from you, so I just want to make sure.
No, nothing else.
Okay, thanks. So the legislature, Rob, do you have anything? If not, I'll, I'll speak briefly about it. First, I want to thank Bill Sutter for testifying on behalf of Shannon Bird's bill about the taxes that are applied to certain things that are bought through our bond money. It turns out that Boulder is one of four municipalities in the whole state that applies that tax, and so I really appreciated Bill going down and testifying. I don't know if he did it remotely or not, but my understanding is that because of his testimony, the bill narrowly made it out of committee. Who knows what fate it awaits as it, as it works its way through the, through the legislature, but I just want to say thanks to Bill and to Rob for supporting Representative Bird's efforts in that, in that regard because I think it's hard to stand up for that kind of thing, and for her to stand up for the school district is, is really helpful. They dropped the bill on special education funding, and the interesting thing in that is it calls for a study. I'm always a little suspicious when the state says it's going to do a study of the actual cost of special education, which I don't know that they can ever do because my sense is, is even if we added up all of the costs, it would still wouldn't be the actual cost because there's so many things that we do that for our special education students across the state, it would be really hard to get arms around it. But I applaud the effort to start looking at that really critical issue. And I think we're gonna, tomorrow we will find out if our own Senator Fenberg is, moves into the leadership position in the Senate. There's, will be a vote tomorrow, so I think we'll see a lot of changing of positions as a result of that. Who knows how the elections will come out, but I do think we'll see some changing of positions and leadership in the Senate, which could influence kind of how some of the legislation proceeds. So stay tuned for that. We'll know at the next board meeting how that came out. And I don't think there's anything else on our legislative agenda for tonight. I think it's going to start to get a little more crazy as, as we get past the leadership issues, bless you, in the Senate, and as we kind of start seeing more deadlines and getting revenue forecasts and those kinds of things. So that's all I have on the legislative agenda. Any questions? Or anybody else want to add anything? All right. So we will move on to revisions to board policy Exhibit AC-E2, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, complaint grievous form- equal opportunity complaint grievance form, and I will turn it over to Kathleen Sullivan.
Thank you, Board President Gebhardt. Under the board's policy, on board policy, if I can use that word too many times in a row, we bring to the board exhibits that we use to implement the board's policy. In August of this year, we had some input from community members, including partners at the NAACP, talking about making this form, which is the way our community would initiate a concern around discrimination or harassment, more accessible, easier to understand, and easier to use. So we undertook a process of collecting input and trying to simplify it, making sure that it still meets our needs and clearly identifying discrimination and harassment so that we can investigate and take action. So this form had not been updated since 2012. With these red lines, we would not only change the way the content is arranged on this document, but we'll also be working with our communications team to make it much easier to fill out online and get to the right person. So we bring this forward for the board's consideration. If you have any feedback, we're certainly happy to take it. And we're looking forward to having a more accessible process for our students, families, and staff.
Board members, any questions? Nicole?
I don't have a question, but reading this red line, I was really impressed by the changes to the exhibit. The tone felt much more approachable, positive, and inclusive, and I can imagine our community will feel so much more willing to file complaints by using this form. And I'm glad also to hear that it will be accessible online. So great first step to making sure our schools and our community are a positive, inclusive places to learn and to work.
Anyone else? Richard?
Can I ask just a process question? You know, once this is approved and it's ready to go, and somebody, sorry, I'm looking at Kathleen. So once the form, the complaint form, is approved and it's put to use and somebody does fill it out, where does it go?
It goes to the board's compliance officer. So we have Equity Council appointed in the district now, Elizabeth Francis, who's the main recipient of these, and then we sort them out to make sure that they're addressed appropriately. A lot of it depends on what comes with the form, but she's the first stop.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Lisa?
Is it possible to follow up on a report you filed, or once they're sent, do they disappear?
Oh, no. Very much like the bullying process that we put in policy last year, the intent of this complaint is to initiate a conversation with this district about what's happening for the individual bringing the complaint. It prompts an investigation and follow-up, and then they receive a response to their complaint so that they know exactly what's happening.
And is that true for folks filing anonymously as well? Do we give them some sort of code number or something?
Yeah, no, we don't actually have a process if somebody wants to submit anonymously to follow up. We don't have a way to shield identity permanently, but we'll be working with communications to make sure that we can still get them anonymously.
Thanks.
Other comments? Kitty? I'm waiting for you to catch the typo, Kitty.
No, I don't have anything, thanks. You mean, there's another typo? I caught one.
Yeah, maybe you caught the same one I did. You're our proofreader, Kitty, so that's why I was waiting to see if you, okay. Well, it's fine. We'll catch it later. Its description is spelled wrong, Kathleen, on page two.
Thank you. I did just want to add to Board Member Sweeney Moran's question. This anonymous piece is something that I think, as counsel, we struggled with a little bit. But what we heard very clearly from our families and from parents and guardians is that that was a really essential piece for them in feeling comfortable coming forward. If you've had an opportunity to hear from Ms. Francis, our Title IX coordinator, she does a really wonderful job of explaining that once we know about something, it's our obligation to follow up regardless if there's a name attached to that concern, and we do. So that was the reason that that was added with a little bit of consternation by your council, but because our community expressed it was so important to them, this is the way that we're recommending we proceed.
Kathleen, I'm so glad we have that option for anonymity. I really appreciate the way you're thinking this through. I was just curious sort of how it worked if somebody filed anonymously, but I'm so glad we have it, and I appreciate you answering the question.
And I'd like to echo Nicole's comments. When I read this, it just felt refreshing. It felt like you wouldn't get tripped up necessarily by the language or by how it was framed, and so I just think that this is a huge positive step, and I'm sure there may be other revisions as people fill it out and we find out that there are things that didn't necessarily work. But thank you for taking the first step on this. All right, anything else on this exhibit? All right, next is revisions to board policy regulation ECAA-R, access to buildings and key control, and again, I will turn it over to Kathleen.
Thank you again. Under the board's policymaking policy, we bring regulations forward to the board so that you have an opportunity to review them, consider if there's any changes you would want to propose. The board does not have to vote on a regulation after an information item. After 30 days, we move forward with implementation of the regulation if we don't get contrary direction from the board. This is just a simple cleanup. It had not been touched since 2004. Obviously, in 2022, security and access to buildings is an incredibly important aspect of our operations. The operations team brought this forward to just do some minor cleanup and then to make sure that we have a policy that reflects our current practices and principles.
This seems like a pretty straightforward change to the regulations, but board members, are there any comments or questions? Kitty, do you have any comments or questions on this regulation revision?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So next, we have on the agenda, I'm assuming we don't need a break because it's, we're getting close to the end, so I just wanted to double-check, is our consent grouping, and I will read those. There's just a few. We have 7.1 personnel items, 7.2 approval of minutes, January 25, 2022, regular meeting, approval of minutes, January 25, 2022, special meeting, and 7.5 approval of a contract amendment to VIA Mobility Services for Student Transportation Services. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So move.
Richard is seconded by Stacy. Laura, can you call the role in the consent grouping?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I believe that I can now say, Rob, that we have just hired the two principals from Fairview and Boulder High Schools, and so I want to say welcome. I see some cheering going on in the audience. My understanding, I had nothing to do with any of the hiring processes, it was followed, we followed our normal hiring practices where it was collaborative, involved multiple staff, involved multiple community members, a lot of it screening, and they will not be starting until July 1. But I think it's exciting to know that we have two new principals starting in two very key positions in our district, so I just want to say a heartfelt welcome and that I really look forward to meeting them in person someday, and wish them all the success in the world with those two amazing high schools and welcome to our district. So I just want to say thank you to staff and to all the families and community members who helped with this hiring process. Rob?
Thanks, Kathy. Could not be more excited. I want to thank our community, those that participated, Dr. De La Cruz, Dr. Fernandez, who helped really orchestrate these very inclusive and rigorous processes. I'm proud to announce for Fairview High School, Dr. Scarlett Choppin, and for Boulder High School, Dr. Alana Morales. Dr. Choppin is coming to us from Evergreen High School in Evergreen, and Dr. Morales is coming to us from a high school in California, but had spent many years as a teacher in 27J in Brighton. And so incredible references, just very, very excited for our communities welcoming them, and I think they're just going to be fantastic. And so, thanks for mentioning that, Kathy.
I'm going to go out on a limb here in a moment of privilege, and I want to say thanks to Scott Stevens, who's not here, who's leaving us, who helped lead our bond program. He is moving to New Mexico. He was also the chair of the BEST Board, and we will miss him, and we really appreciate his contributions to the district. So I just want to say thanks publicly to him as well for his service. So on the study items, we have agenda setting, which I think we spent a fair amount of time yesterday doing, but maybe there's been time to think about other things we want to add to the agenda since yesterday. I'm seeing no's, but Kitty, is there anything you want to add to agenda setting, Kitty?
No, thanks.
All right, any, oh, wait, Richard?
Just a question, just a question. Is there any way that we can push, is it back or up, the presentation on community partnerships?
Let me take a look. We have cabinet tomorrow. Let me take a look at our team. The sequencing was pretty intentional, and want to make sure, you know, you move something up, you might not have the information to share. Let me check with, let me check with our team , see if we can do something.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments for the good of the cause and the good of the order? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
So Kitty, seconded by Beth. Thank you, everyone. Do not get used to these short board meetings. We have a very packed agenda going forward, so enjoy the time tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.